Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the... Actually, could we? Could somebody shut the door, please? Thank you. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment of the city of Nashua for the January 24th, 2024 meeting. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the vice chair of the zoning board, and I will be conducting the meeting tonight. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. We have the meeting accessible in person here in the third floor auditorium of City Hall and also via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter and select the zoning board of adjustment. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols and procedures that are outlined and identified in our bylaws. The applicant will present their case for up to 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, any persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes, and what we usually do is we ask for those in support first and then those with opposition or questions after that. If there are questions or oppositions, the applicant will have up to five minutes to present a response. And then finally, one and only one person that had the questions or was in opposition will be permitted to speak again for the final rebuttal, and that is before the board will deliberate and determine an outcome. Timer is used to manage our speaking time. Karina Ochoa, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use either the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a computer, or the more menu on a phone. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question or comment. Also, please mute your microphone until called on to speak. Also note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for both special exceptions and/or variances. In this case, it's both. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, there are five points of law that are required to be met, and these are outlined in the application and will be summarized in board motions. Meanwhile, variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not directly permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, but those are different from those that are required for special exceptions. Also, per the city of Nashville bylaws and the state of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting, which we definitely have tonight. Also, any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this board makes. If you believe that we have made a decision in error, you have the right to request a rehearing, but the written rehearing request must be received by the city of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can still file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and please contact Mr. Carter Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance: myself, Rob Shaw, the vice chair, Mr. J.P. Boucher, our clerk, Mr. Steve Lionel, and then we also have the following alternate members in attendance: Mr. Josh Neely, who is here in person, and Ms. Estafia Boras, who is on Zoom with us. In addition to the board members, we also have from city staff, Mr. Carter Falk, the deputy planning manager, and Ms. Karina Ochoa, the zoning coordinator. I will start off then by taking a roll call attendance, and then for board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is a reason... Sorry, whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Steve Lionel.
Present.
Mr. Josh Neely.
Present.
Ms. Estafia Boras.
Present via Zoom.
And nobody's with you, and what's your...
Oh, I'm sorry. There is no one in the room with me. The reason for me being in attendance via Zoom is due to my work schedule.
All right. Thank you. And then Rob Shaw again in attendance as well. So we have five members across our full board and alternate members, so we should have five voting on all cases unless somebody needs to recuse themselves, but right now, all five members that are present will participate and vote on all cases. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right. Thank you. We just have two cases tonight. We'll start with case number one. I'll read it into the record, and then whoever is going to be providing the initial testimony, you can then step up to the mic, and we'll go from there. So we have Kennedy Properties LLC, the owner, at 21-23 Perry Avenue, sheet 121, lot 51, with the request for the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3 for minimum land area where 12,445 square feet are required, 11,940 square feet are proposed. Secondly, for minimum lot frontage, 50 feet is required, 40 feet is proposed. And thirdly, for minimum lot width, 60 feet is required, 40 feet is proposed. All these requests are to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new single-family home. This is in the RB zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this case? If you can... Please state your name and address into the microphone for the record. If you need to, you might want to just tilt that boom up for the mic so it picks you up better. You're also always... And this goes for anybody. That mic is detachable, so if anybody would rather hold it, you're welcome to do that tonight as well. So, welcome, and yeah.
Thank you. My name is William Baker. I'm an attorney from Shaheen &amp; Gordon on behalf of the applicant, Kennedy Properties LLC. With me tonight is also J.J. Kennedy, member-owner of Kennedy Properties. Address of our firm here in Nashua is 191 Main Street, just a couple blocks down. I think I covered all.
Yep. So if you want to go ahead and basically walk us through the case?
Sure. So this case, as you stated earlier, involves a proposed subdivision of a lot. The lot in question is located at 2123 Perry Street, which is located in the RB district. The current single lot is .41 acres with 17,664 square feet and currently contains a two-family house. We are proposing to divide that property to create a separate property as of yet undeveloped. That would be 6,024 square feet where the applicant would propose to build a single-family home. Both of the resulting lots would meet most, but not all, of the zoning requirements and specifically would not meet those referenced when introducing us: ordinance Section 190-16, Table 16-3E, which requires 50 feet of frontage on a public way; ordinance Section 190-16, Table 16-3D, which requires a minimum lot width of 50 feet. Those variances, we both request for the new proposed lot or the subdivided lot where the single-family home would be developed and built. And then the result of subdividing that property would leave the main lot with the two-family home at 11,900 square feet, and given the density requirements, while I understand it's not readily apparent facially in the table, our understanding is that when you divide the density by the square footage in acre, it results in a requirement of 6,222.8 square feet being necessary for a proposed lot, and we would fall just about 200 square feet under that when combining those two lots. Or I'm sorry, combining the two residences on the larger parcel. The purpose statement of the RB district is set forth in the ordinance is that the district is appropriate for older residential sections of Nashua surrounding the urban core. The RB district permits duplexes by right and multifamily dwellings with three or more units subject to special standards. Pursuant to statute, there are five factors that the board shall consider as grounds for the variance. I'm sure you're all very familiar with them, but I'm going to go through them in order here. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has held that to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. One way to ascertain whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether it would alter the essential character of the locality. Another approach is to determine whether granting the variance would violate basic zoning objectives is to examine whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. Going back to the ordinance itself, the dimensional regulations outlined in Section 190-16 say that the purpose is to regulate the location and use of buildings, structures, and land used for business, industrial, residential, or other purposes. The purpose statement goes on to state that this section implements the following master plan recommendations: encourage infill development within and work to revitalize existing commercial areas. And as far as the master plan is concerned, that the infill in developing that, that's exactly what we're talking about here. This is a unique parcel of property, and that it is three times what is required for a lot. It is somewhat uniquely situated in the fact that it does currently have a duplex on it, so the lot, which there is the proposed subdivision plan that you should have received with the application, I do have copies of that if it would help the board to get a better understanding of what we're talking about here.
Are you talking about the image that's on the screen?
That's the one right there.
Yeah, we have that thing.
Okay. Great. So as you can see, it results in a frontage that is shorter than what is required, coming in at 40 feet, whereas the 50 feet of street frontage is required. It would also start with the width then being 40 feet, but as you can see by the plan, that proposed lot tapers back so that by the time you reach the back of the property closer to where the proposed single-family home would be built, it spreads out to nearly 75 feet. So looking at that all, the average width is, I believe, does meet that 60-foot requirement, but the lot as proposed would meet all other setbacks, therefore would not encroach on the property of any of the abutters beyond what is already considered by the ordinance. Section 190-17 of the ordinance pertaining to residential districts is to protect the character of existing neighborhoods through zoning regulations and enforcement. Again, this subdivided lot, looking at it, will not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare of this neighborhood in any way. Adding a third dwelling unit to the property will add much-needed housing to Nashua. Conditional use permit would allow for the building of the proposed home, and we are confident that if the variances are granted, that we would meet the criteria to successfully apply for and receive that conditional use permit to build the additional single-family Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has recognized two methods for ascertaining whether granting a variance would violate an ordinance's basic zoning objective. Again, they rely on whether it would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or, once more, to examine whether it would threaten the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. Again, it would not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare in any way, and is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the master plan for the city of Nashua. Number three, substantial justice is done. In addressing the substantial justice factor, the Supreme Court has stated that perhaps the only guiding rule on this factor is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. There would be no gain to the public by denying this variance, whereas there would be a substantial benefit to the public, again, in the form of granting and allowing to be built additional housing in a much-needed area. So we believe that substantial justice would be done by granting those variances. Number four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and the Supreme Court has found that zoning board may consider noise, traffic, aesthetics, and intensity of use in considering what effect, if any, the variance would have on a surrounding property values. The addition of one single-family home would have a negligible effect on noise, traffic, or aesthetics, or intensity of use. In addition, as provided with our application, the letter from Errol Duhmaslar, a veteran Nashua-based real estate broker, in his opinion is that adding the single-family home would have no impact and no detrimental impact on the surrounding property values. And then five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. For purposes of that subparaphrase, unnecessary hardship means that the following special conditions to the property distinguish it from properties in the area, and that owing to these special conditions, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. In interpreting that factor, the New Hampshire Supreme Court has stated that to demonstrate unnecessary hardship, a variance applicant must prove: one, a zoning restriction is applied to their property interferes with their reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment; two, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property; and three, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. A reasonable inference regarding the purpose of the RB district is to increase infill residential opportunities while protecting the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Again, this property is unique in that it is three times the size of what is required for a lot because of the location of the duplex on it currently. That's the reason why when adhering to the setbacks, the frontage on the property would be less. So it's complying with other sections of the ordinance while resulting in the 40-foot frontage. The same can be held true for the width. Again, we're trying to maintain compliance with the existing side setback requirements, which has resulted in a narrower lot, at least at the front. Because this property is three times, it is reasonable to allow the owner to use it to build three distinct properties on it, to allow for three sets of tenants to move in there. So we believe that in light of the proposed purpose of the zoning ordinance and the master plan, that it, concerning the unique setting of the property, that it would be unreasonable to deny the variance and not allow to use that piece of property. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. Again, I just got into that, but the variances we are requesting having to do with frontage and width and then the total square footage of the property with the duplex that would result, we are maintaining compliance with the zoning ordinance in all other ways. So really, the issue is amongst and between these two parcels of land that would be owned by the same owner. I understand that there is an abutter to the left of that property as well, but again, all the building that is proposed would be in accordance with the side setback requirements. So there would be no additional infringement on that other than what is already considered under the ordinance. And then three, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. Again, housing in Nashua is absolutely needed right now. This would provide an additional single-family home on a lot that, except for these frontage and width requirements, which the width is addressed as you move back on the lot, other than those two issues, complies with the zoning ordinance in all other ways. Again, this property has an excess of footage in a lot area nearly three times what is required in the RB district and will be conforming in all respects other than those addressed here. For those reasons, we would ask that the zoning board grant the requested variances and allow the owner to subdivide that property, after which point he would apply for the conditional permit and look towards building a single-family home on the subdivided lot. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can hold on. Any questions from the board? The math isn't working for me, so I don't know if there's a calculation error somewhere in here.
Okay.
But what I... I'm seeing what it seems to be a 300-square-foot error somewhere in the midst of things.
Okay.
Because the... At least the proposal on the plot totals up to 17,964, whereas the text and the description talks about 17,664. And so I would like to just try to make sure, kind of understand, because there is something that doesn't match up.
I had... I have 17,664, is my understanding. Perhaps that was listed differently in the application?
Well, Mike, the thing is, then, if it's 17,664, then what's represented on the plan is missing or has an extra 300 square feet allocated. So I don't know if it's just that, you know, six became a nine, or nine became a six somewhere along the way, which, you know, could have very easily happened.
The... I can tell you, I believe the plan is right, and what we had taken from that is likely wrong. So if that... If the plan lists a 17,9, that is the more accurate of the two.
Okay.
I would trust the surveyor.
I would tend to, too, whereas the verbiage is probably, you know, blifted from this information, and I could see an error, a six turns to a nine, vice versa.
Nobody's ever accused attorneys of being good at math. Leave that to the professionals.
Okay. That was all. I just wanted to try to make sure I understood. Ms. Boris, did you have any questions? Sorry, I didn't check to make sure.
I do not. Thank you.
All right. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application here in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, see, none. Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to this case at 21-23 Perry Avenue? Okay, see, none. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition about this case? All right. It looks like we're good for any other... So we will close the public hearing, and we will open the public meeting, and I don't think I really much explained that, but that's where the board will deliberate based on the testimony we heard and will come to some kind of decision. Mr. Neely, your thoughts?
So, excuse me. This neighborhood is an interesting mixture of single-family and duplexes, as noted by the duplexes, both on the parent lot now and to the left of where it currently sits, if you look at the property line. This applicant is definitely negatively affected by the different shape, we'll call it different shape, of the lot here. Definitely fans out, as the counselor spoke about, it goes to about 75 feet. I'm generally in favor of this application. I do believe where it sits in the neighborhood, it has its back up against Mine Falls, so it does have the... You know, it's not backing up against another neighborhood. It's got a bunch of wooded area behind it. Nashua certainly does need the housing stock. I think this is a good addition to this area here. I do believe they hit the five criteria. I was appreciative of the fact that we had an affidavit from a realtor stating that the values of the neighborhood would not be negatively affected, so for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Lionel, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think I agree with Mr. Neely. I'm generally in favor of it. I mean, I'm always a little bit reluctant to do infill on small lots, but it seems to be the way things are going, and I can't think of anything really too objective, so I would support it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also am going to support the application. The, again, as Mr. Neely stated, that this neighborhood is a mix. I believe that there are several other lots that exist that may not be exactly 40 feet in the frontage but are close, and so visually, I think that no one would really see that. On the duplex lot, again, I think visually, you wouldn't pick up the, let's say, call it 400 square feet, especially when I drove by, you know, there's the path there that goes to Mine Falls. You really don't know where the property line is. So again, visually, I don't think that this is going to, you know, stick out more than anything else in that neighborhood. So again, special conditions, I believe, are, you know, again, as Mr. Neely says, that it's a slight curve, larger that property line. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Boris, your thoughts?
I'm all... Yes, I'm also in support of the application and for all the reasons already discussed by my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in support as well. I think a couple of things to me that are pretty noteworthy is that total square footage is extremely close to what would be required for three single 6,000-square-foot lots. So the density that's being asked for as far as dwellings is very consistent with that kind of density. And the fact that this existing duplex is so skewed to that part of the property that this width and frontage, I think they did everything possible, but clearly, that's not really overcomeable, if I can use a kind of a made-up word. So I think it's reasonable with what they've proposed, and I think it fits the criteria, and I think the case was well-presented. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of this application as well. Would anybody like to offer a motion? Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three variances for Kennedy Properties LLC, the owner, which is located at 21-23 Perry Avenue, sheet 121, lot 51, requesting the three variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-13, number one for minimum land area, 12,445 square feet required, 11,940 square feet proposed; number two for minimum lot frontage, 50 feet required, 40 feet proposed; and number three for minimum lot width, 60 feet required, 40 feet proposed. All requests to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new single-family home. This is located in the RB zone, Ward 4. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variances. The board did have discussion. We have found that this parent lot would have been able to fit with square footage up to three single-family houses. Currently has a duplex on there, which is skewed a little bit off of the property line. We did find that the proposed new secondary property does not have a regular shape. In fact, it's an irregular shape that fans out from 40 feet in the front, going back to about 75 feet in the back. We did discuss the fact that Mines Falls does go up against the back of it, so this would not be affecting a neighborhood behind this. In addition, we did discuss the fact that this does fit into the character of the neighborhood in that there is a mix of duplex and single-family homes. We do find that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will add housing stock to the Nashua area, which is badly needed. This will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We did have an affidavit from a local realtor stating that the property values would not be negatively affected. This is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice is served. So for those reasons, I do make a motion to approve the three variances.
Before we get to the second...
Before we get to the second, just a minor correction. Mr. Neely, you said Table 16-13 and it's 16-3.
My mistake. Thank you for pointing that out. I'd like to amend that to 16-3.
All right. And I'll second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Neely, how do you go?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. Boris?
Ms. Boris votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. That passes unanimously, 5-0. You're welcome to proceed with your, your plans. Just a kind of a caution, like for any case, as I noted in the introductory remarks, there is a 30-day window, which somebody could, you know, ask for a rehearing, but unless that would happen, there's no restriction for you to kind of keep moving forward with the process. So good luck with your project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will move to Case 2. I will read that into the record. Santos Gomez Reyes, the owner, Carla Torres, the applicant, at 34-36 Gillis Street, Sheet 27, Lot 9, is requesting the following: use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36, Subsection B, to allow an in-home childcare facility in a three-family dwelling where the ordinance only allows them in a single-family detached dwelling. Secondly, for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36, Section B, Subsection 3, to allow childcare facility on a lot that does not meet the minimum land area, 18,669 square feet required, 6,838 square feet is existing. And thirdly, for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Entry Number 292, to allow an in-home child daycare for 12 children. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this case?
No, opposite.
Okay, you can, you can come up, and you can do it a couple of different ways. You could each take, one of you could just be the lead for up to 15 minutes and then each of the rest of you could come up for five minutes, or if the three of you want to come up and just kind of do a joint testimony for 15 minutes, you're welcome to do it that way as well.
I would like to give my work to my wife first, since she would like to.
Yeah, that's fine. And just state your name and address for the record when you get to the mic and feel free to lower that now.
My name is Vanessa Arbelais Gomez and I'm from 38 Gillis Street, from National Hampshire.
All right, welcome. And so, yeah, please tell us about what you're doing, walk us through the applications and, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So first, I know we have three different variants, as you just explained. So one is the land, Kyle, Mark, well, all of them has gone through the house and...
I'm sorry.
They have accepted for 12 kids. They did measurements and everything in the house for 12 kids. We already explained on constructing a stair, like a staircase on the left of the house, so they go directly to the yard. So we have 38 and 34, 36 Gillis Street. We combine both yards to one big yard. So the kids will have directly access to the yard, which is already like all have walls, so is like safe for them. Fence, sorry, which is already safe for them, so they don't have like the danger to walk around the street. So the, the daycare itself, like is constructed, safe enough for the kids. As I said, they have already taken measurements for 12 kids. I know one of the concerns is to see if like we will be with the 12 kids all the time. Tasha already has the list of all the kids, their ages. I know there's gonna be only four kids under three years old and the rest of the kids, which are eight, over three years old. She has, as I said, she has the list, their birthdays, their names, everything already outside. So why do we want this to come true? So the, you want to come up? So Carla, she has been a great help for each one of us as a parent. My child was diagnosed with autism a year ago and he's two years old, almost turning three. So this started in Columbia. He was, as I said, with autism, so we did like speech therapy there, occupational therapy, and it helped, but not as much as someone that can be with him every single day helping him. So Carla has a history of 18 years working with children. In this 18 years, 10 of those years, she worked with special aid kids. So she has, like, she knows what she's doing. She has all the education needed for this. It's not like she just wanted to do a daycare. She actually went to school for them to become her life. She's not a normal babysitter. I mean, I don't bring my kid to her and she just like sees him to watch TV or anything like that. She actually does a bunch of work with them, dances, sign language. She also do like extracurricular work. In my case, like as I said, he has autism, so she takes an hour, an hour and a half just to sit with them and try to help him like talk. She also gave me like a huge packet of sign language that I can practice with my kid at home. I mean, that is something out of her regular curriculum that she's not need to do for me. So I know like she does it because she loves these kids and she's willing to take good care of them. So another thing, like there are no daycares in Nashua. I was in a list, Nashua, Merrimack, Millford, like all around for more than eight months and I didn't find anything. And honestly, this is affecting 12 moms and 12 dads, because if we can't work, like nobody has, is there to take care of our kids, one of us can't work. And like rent is not gonna go lower because one of us can't work, or bills, or food, or even like, as you can see, like we all immigrants, so our family in our countries also depend on us, like moms, dads, siblings, like also depend on our help. So like we really need to work and to have our kids to be safe with someone. So I know she, also one of her good things, like as I said, I had my kid in like a bunch of daycares waiting lists and like usually when I go, it's like 800, 400, I mean, 300, 400, depending on their ages. And Carla, even Tasha said it, I had not seen anyone on your cause. Why? Because she does it to help us. She does it because she loves the kids. She doesn't do it just to make money.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carla.
And if you could state your full name and address? Thank you.
I'm the teacher. My address is 34 Gillis. So I'm working 10 years in the daycare in Wisconsin. I'm moving because my husband find a job in here, that's my family. And then I start babysitting on my house for three or four kids only, like full-time, part-time, a couple of days, like that. It's my passion watching kids. I got two kids, one is 18 years old and then my little one is, sorry, my older's 20 and my little one is 18. And then my 20-years-old, he gave me a grandchild, which is almost two years old. I want to show you what is my job, okay? You can see the picture of the daycare, it's everything fun for the kids. When the parents go to work, my job is learning, teaching the kids learning really good. I want to teach in Spanish, English, and sign language. I'm, I'm, I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, and then I think so you two, you're the fathers, you're the grandpas. And then what is you the best is get it, your kids stay safe, right? So this is the stuff, like teaching the kids.
You want me to pass it to you?
No, actually, we don't, we really don't. I mean, I appreciate, we appreciate it, but, but actually, we need to focus, we actually need to focus mostly on the actual land use and that part of things, so.
So and, and then the, the parents need somebody watching the kid, you know? And then they, some, so many, all the, all this stuff passing the inspection, so they say it's safe, the kids, and then that's it.
My name is Santos Reyes on 38 Gillis Street. So I'm, I am father, the two kids that come and change my life, Carla's take care of them. I think the most, the parents, the one they worry about is about the parking. And I know for a fact, like, we are close to a school, I know for, because that's why one of the reason, three years ago, when I, when I find the house, it was hard by then because it's hard to buy a house, you know? Like we had to work hard, do taxes every year, that I have proved every go then. About the parking, I know there is two kids that come with her in the morning and I got two kids at home that we live in 38 Gillis Street. So it's only a father and so total, they're gonna drop the kids next to the daycare. I mean, we own 38 Gillis and we own 34, 36 Gillis, and I know we have like probably, if you put the picture, we have enough like space for kids to be parking like on the, on the right side from my side on 38 Gillis Street to drop the kids, because I know we have a lot of worry about like the ardent street, one neighborhood about the, the parking, the people were parking and, and I know like we're just trying to come in here and... A finite solution. I'm not here to blame someone, because I don't, I don't want to blame someone. I want to work hard to make difference. But yeah, like if you see in the back, like the two, the yellow one and the red one, if you see in the front, there is enough like parking in the street to be parking like eight, let's say if everyone's open the same time, but it's never happened that, like sometimes one is a seven, sometimes it's one eighth, another one a thirty, to drop in and walk by to the, to the basement. Why happened the daycare in the basement? As my wife say, like, so I'm worried about my kid, because he, he became like for 35% of autism. So it's hard. I haven't seen that, like, I love my kid, I want to talk to him, but it's hard. But we don't have a song played, don't they can spend more time with more kids, that way they can learn. So I was worried about it, like, she said that we were in a waiting list on Merrimack for six months. We never get called back. And Carla here like have changed my kid. So I wish to bring here and you would hear him walking crazy. He starts saying Papa, Mama. So normally, you know, like at two years, the kids start saying words. My kid didn't. So he just start doing it and it's a blessing for me. I know every one of you, one day you guys back then had kids, like little ones, and you guys will do everything for them. I know I make a mistake when I do stuff, like the city knows me already. I hard work it, like they know, they, and then I come and try to fix it, as I did over here. I did everything inspection. I mean, the, the one most worried about was about the parking, but if you, everyone see it, like I say, we can find a solution for it. But I will leave it for every one of you. I will give you more work for the other fathers, if you see everyone of them here, because they worry about it. They worry about it tomorrow, if you, let's say if we get a negative answer, we worry about it, where we're gonna take our kids? Because I know for a fact, food is expensive, gas is expensive, everything is expensive right now, and we had to find a place to have the kids safely. I had never heard my babies crying or walking by the street running like Carla fall on hand, "Maximo, stay, stay." I never heard that. So I think it's just a great, great teacher and great grandmother. So thank you so much.
Please hang on then. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Boucher?
I think maybe it was mentioned, but where is the fenced-in area for children?
So my one mentioning about that, because, so we own the 38 Gillis Street, the yellow one. So I make a white fence, plastic one, all the way around the, my backyard, even I put a fence and when I did a deck, like to cover the space. And I told Mara already from the zoning, that we will, we will build another stairway, that way the kids can go to the backyard. And we had over like, I think, that one in the back, which is touching already now the yellow.
I'm sorry. So we took the, the yard from 34, 36 and 38 Gillis Street. So that backyard are both combined within the same fence. That way it's just going to build a staircase and they will have like the entire space from both houses to play in.
Okay, so you're utilizing, you're utilizing, so you're utilizing 38 Gillis Street or some of that area for the children?
Just that yard.
Just the yard, yeah.
All right. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Mr. Neely, did you have something?
So you, you own both 34, 36, and 38, right?
Correct.
Gillis. So what happens if you sell 38 with the associated yard?
Good question.
I'm gonna have real concerns about having a daycare.
No, no, that's a great question.
I mean, you'd have to write, basically write it in. I mean, this, this has to be documented somehow.
Yeah. I'll be honest with you, like I said, I came here in 2012, as I remember. One of my big dreams was to have my family here. I have family in Washington State, Maryland, Texas, and also Miami. I get the opportunity to stay in one of them for a week, we're gonna have to vacation. And then my mother and one of my uncles living here for, since in 1997. Since I came here, I felt a safe place. I felt like there's no noise, there is no traffic. I worked in Bellstone and it get me crazy. But a quick question about what you're saying about selling the house. One of my goals is to have my kids grow up in a safer place, see them being a lawyer, one of probably doctor. But about selling a house, I don't think so, because if you see, I feel home. Last year, by the way, I became a citizen. It was a hard work, long way to come get there, and I'm glad to say taking my kids at home to stay. And I had two kids, so...
And just one thing to add. When we were first looking for this house, we look at the school district, we look like a good place, and we also looked something like close to my parents, since they're the ones like stay here. So my parents are three minutes away from my house. If anything, I can just call him. So as his brother, we have a good school district that my brother went to, so I know the school, and that's why we looked in the area of where the house is. So I'm pretty sure we're not moving and like we're keeping the house. And as Santos said, like our goal is to like keep growing and like keep his company growing. So that means like buying more house and not selling houses.
The, the house itself, the 34, 36, is, is that three stories and also the area in the bottom, so really four stories you're using?
It will be if he get a sex, yes. Yeah, no, he's asking about it's three-story, yes, it's three-story, yeah.
Okay.
Looks like we just lost the computer.
Any question?
I think we just lost the computer.
Too much information.
Actually, I was gonna, if you can hang on a second, I was gonna ask Mr. Fox. So do you have any guidance as far as like if we are then trying to consider a motion for this property, but with consideration, like is it, would it be appropriate for us to have a stipulation that cites, you know, usage of 38 for the daycare that needs to be part of this? Because this is, this is kind of a tricky one.
You're correct, Mr. Chair. Generally, the play area is supposed to be on the subject lot and this wasn't, the application or the advertisement didn't include 38 Gillis, it only was 34 to 36. And like, like Mr. Neely said... And like, like Mr. Neely said, if this, if thirty-eight is sold, then there goes the play area. And so, we can't really regulate that. So, it's supposed to be on the subject lot.
Okay, okay.
But I mean, they obviously own the property next door, I mean, in the real world, they can certainly use that. I mean, they can have a fence with an opening, and have it all fenced in, and have the kids play back and forth. But we didn't advertise it that way, and the application wasn't that way, it's supposed to be on the subject lot.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. All right. Mr. Boucher?
And Mr. Fox, just for clarification, the, the, the conditions is no play area on the front, on the front, frontage, right?
Correct.
At the front side. But this is a corner home, right, and it's two frontages, right? We would look at that as possibly two frontages. Just technically, it would be that, but, but we'd have to look at that a little bit more.
Correct. Yeah, they can't have the play area in the front, it can be in the side or in the rear. So, thirty-four, thirty-four to thirty-six has two fronts and two sides, so they can play in the side.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Boris, did you have any questions?
My questions have already been answered, thank you.
Just a follow-up. So, again, the, the pickups and drop-offs, of course, the entrance is on Arlington Ave, right?
Yes.
You had mentioned, or, or somebody had mentioned something about, you know, there's plenty of room to park on Gillis Street. What's the expectation? Is there, are you planning to have, again, there's supposed to be a couple of spots open on the property for pickup and drop-offs? If those spots are full, what would be, what would you be telling your, your clients to do, to do at that point?
I'm sorry, so we had a meeting already, like, all the parents, we had a meeting. We all agree, and you can ask each one of them. We all agree if those spaces on Arlington Street is, are already taken, they are gonna be responsible to go and park on Gillis Street, which is a wider street. They already know about thirty-eight, so try to find a parking space on thirty-eight or the front of thirty-four, thirty-six. If not, then just, like, make sure you're not close to the corner, but park on, like, Gillis Street and not on Arlington.
Okay, and then, a follow-up. You have tenants, obviously.
Uh huh.
So, how, how are we assured that the spaces that are supposed to be provided for your clients are not being taken up by your tenants, who may have one or two cars, we know, I don't know? I mean, it's normal, right, that families have more than one car? So, how, how are you working that out?
So, the one on, right in front of Arlington, is five parking spaces. So, one is a van for upstairs, the other one, two cars are for first floor. And then, second floor is parking on Gillis Street. So, three cars from the unit.
He was mentioning about thirty-eight, right?
No, no, it's thirty-four, thirty-six. So, three, three cars from the units will be on Arlington. But from unit two are on Gillis already, so they have nothing to do on the parking space on Arlington.
So, the parking spots on, off of Gillis Street, it, when I went, I drove by, and maybe I'm missing something. It appears that, I believe that's where, I don't know if that's, am I, am I right, whether or not they're going over the curb to get onto the, onto the property? I.
Yeah, like the little.
No, no.
Is there, is, is there, are you, and I'm trying to remember now, so was on Arlington?
Yeah, so if, when you're talking about the parking in front of thirty-eight.
Right on the corner?
No, the, the corner one, no, it's the next one. I think you saw the white fence, do you remember that?
Okay.
That was a white fence, so just in the front of thirty-eight Gillis Street, I have enough parking for seven cars. And also, the city, so I got a, I did a deck with a roof, that I fit two cars inside. That is where my wife parked, and I parked. Like, in the front, just the front of thirty-eight Gillis Street, if you can see it.
Then between, between thirty-eight and thirty-six Gillis Street, there's also two parking spaces.
Two parking spaces.
And then, the one, I think that's the one you're talking about, is the one right on the corner?
Right.
So, like, on the right side of the house, like.
In the left side, in the left side, talking about the left side.
Yeah, when you face the left side, so when I went by, it was snow, right? So, I was trying to figure out whether or not there was a driveway there, or if you're, if you're, you're just, you know, going, you know, was it existing thing, where you're just driving over the curb to park on the side?
No, it's a driveway.
Okay, all right. I couldn't tell with the snow, it was, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board? The, Mr. Boucher and Mr. Neely asked the questions that I was going to, so. All right, I think we're, we're all set, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here in the audience that would like to speak with support? Please come on up. Just state your name and address when you get to the microphone, and you'll have up to five minutes if you need that much time.
Good evening, my name is Shania Pino. I live on thirty Cypress Lane, apartment number eight, Nashua, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-six-three.
Thank you.
So, like I said, I'm Shania Pino, I'm here in support of Carla Torres. It is my hope that the request for the variance is granted. Unfortunately, in our community, there is very limited options and availability for affordable childcare. Carla's business offers a solution to that, and gives an opportunity to work in parents like myself, and all the parents you see here today, to be gainfully employed and provide for our families. I know my child is in good hands with Carla and her team. My child feels safe, loved, and nurtured by them. If the parking is the biggest issue, for all the complaints, we can easily rectify that problem and make sure to park accordingly in the neighborhood. The drop-off and pickup of the children doesn't last more than two minutes, we're in and out. I, when I drop off my child around eight fifteen in the morning, I hardly ever run into other parents dropping their child off at, around the same time, same with pickup in the afternoon. If space is taking up at Arlington, I can go around a few times, wait, park on Gillis, make sure not to block any driveways, block any cars, or cause any safety, like, issues in the neighborhood. Granting the variance will not impact the safety and welfare of those in the neighborhood. And again, I respectfully ask that you please grant the variance, and please take into consideration all the families that will be impacted by your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Actually, did you say, can you hang on a second?
Yep, a quick question for you. So, so, thank you for that, that, talking about what's going on there. So, you're the first person to come up and say you're one of the, the parents who are driving up and dropping off the children, so I think I have a couple of questions for, for you.
Okay, sure.
As a representative person of really what's going on. I get it, you know, the, the teacher's inside, she's not paying attention to what's going on outside. You know, we're, we're getting a lot of complaints from the neighbors, saying they're, they're all getting blocked. I wanna know what's really going on. So, so you say you don't usually see folks, you also said you're circling the block a few times, so, you know.
No, I said, if, you know, parking is taken, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so there's Arlington Avenue, so it seems like you guys already, like, went, passed by and saw how, you know, the space is set up. I personally, when I went, I used to park on Arlington Avenue towards the right side. I would never block any driveway, or, you know, drive the wrong way or anything, 'cause I know it's a one-way street. You know, and if, you know, I know a lot of the complaints are from the neighbors in that neighborhood. And I get it, it's a very narrow street, so I'll try to avoid not parking there. And again, Gillis, as you guys have seen, it's a wider street, and I can park, it's a public street. I can park, you know, on either side of the street if there's no cars. And, you know, it doesn't affect, like, the traffic flow of the neighborhood. You know, and I won't block any driveways, block any cars in. I mean, it's not safe, so why would I, you know, want to do that? I don't want my car to get hit, I wouldn't wanna do that, so.
And, and so, we had heard earlier that this discussion to ask all the parents to not park anymore on Arlington has already happened, is that, is that, has that occurred?
What was that?
There, there was some discussion earlier that they had already talked to all the parents and said, you know, we've had enough complaints, no more parking in Arlington, this really happened?
Yes, they did have a meeting with all of us, and they told us, you know, not to park anywhere, and, you know, if this, if X, Y, and Z happen, there's no parking, you know, do this instead.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I think we're good, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Would anybody else like to offer up any testimony and support? Come on up, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, good evening, my name is Manuel Flores. I come to support Santos and Carla.
Can you say your, your address too?
One thirty-six Kingsley Street.
Thank you.
But I come to support Santos and Carla. I'm the owner on the grocery store, right from one of the guys, they set up the daycare. Say, when the guys told me about the daycare, so many peoples around all the neighborhoods, every day come to my store. Early in the morning, I'm, I work in construction company, right? Early in the morning, my wife, she handled the business, and she pick up so many good opinions about the daycare, because so many people works in construction. In my special case, I have a child two years old, right, two and a half. Early in the morning, I'm, I work in construction, and my wife, she handle the, the business in the morning. It's a good business, it's a good point for us, have a daycare pretty close for us. We can put my child, take care on the day. When I back to work, my wife bring it, take my child back home, and I handle the business. So, I told Santos last time, it's a good point, if you have a daycare pretty close for us. And I told him, if you need the parking, I have my spot ready for them also. Because I have a big backyard beside my building, and I don't have any problem with that. All delivery truck for my business, for my food stop, they park right from the, Arlington Street. And they don't block any, any driveway. I just come to support the guys.
Thank you.
Okay?
I don't think there's any questions, right? Come on up, please, and.
Hi, my name is Masiel Perez Hernandez, I live in two twenty-five Webster Street, Hudson, New Hampshire. The prize of success is hard work, dedication to the job at hand, and determination that whether we win or lose, we have applied to the best ourselves to this task at hand. Vince Lombardi. After several months that I was looking for daycares, I was in a longer waiting list. The daycare was above my range. I have, they have no hygiene at all, because I was driving there and I was checking how they work. The amen, it wasn't the amen that I was looking for my kid. I called week, after being forty-five minutes on week, over the phone, filling up an application. They said, unfortunately, your income is above our range. It's not a space for Lucas. My husband was the only one income at the time. I have them why? And the answer was, yes, it's a space for kids, but not on his, for his age, but not for him. It was for only low-income families. I found a babysitter, and Lucas cries in tears every day before I drop him off. It got me thinking all day about it. I started desperately looking, and I found Carla. What impacted me about Carla is how, how clean her house was. What I love most about Carla is how organized and dedicated to her passion she is. You can walk anytime to her house, and it's impeccable condition. Let's talk about Lucas. Lucas started on Wednesday, by Friday, he was trained, no more diapers. He cleaned himself, washing hands right after, right after. He learned how to drink from cups in days. He has a schedule, he is polite, he knows how to eat alone. He, he learned the colors in weeks. Carla worked with him on a way that he make him walk, she make him talk, because Lucas couldn't even talk well for, you know Carla, he couldn't, he couldn't even talk, and Carla helped him talk in weeks. Carla start, Lucas was given a completely false sentence in just weeks. And I can keep saying many, many things about Carla. We, we all have said, I can tell that she puts the heart into it. The dedication, organization, and dedication along with the love provided is unexplainable. Lucas has come crying, Carla comes and carry Lucas all the way until he comes down. She hug him for goodbye at school. The teachers at school has asked me, who's Carla? On weekends, mommy, are we going to Carla's house? Lucas, tomorrow, tomorrow mommy, promise? Yes, tomorrow. She's not an actual babysitter, she's a family for him. And we need more humans like Carla around in daycares.
Thank you.
Almost it.
I think we're all set, thank you. Would anybody else like to offer testimony and support of this application? Is there anybody online that has, would like to offer support, testimony? All right, seeing none, is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up and state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Catherine Sirwa, and I live at twenty-five Gillis Street, Nashua. And I believe that you've already gotten a rebuttal letter from me regarding the parking. I know they say Gillis Street is a wider street, and there's plenty of room for parking. The neighbor to the left of me, twenty-three Gillis Street, you cannot park in front of that house. What they have done is they put wood in front of the curbing, drive over the curbing, over the sidewalk, and all the cars park towards the house. In the morning, because there are so many people parked in the driveway, that they have to pull their cars out, they park on Gillis Street so that people can get out. At thirty-eight Gillis Street, they have the width of a driveway of one vehicle. They too have the curbing, they have wood, drive over the curbing, over the sidewalk, so that you cannot park from that edge all the way up to the next house. In front of his house, there may be room for maybe two cars, three cars. And he's also operating a construction company at thirty-eight Gillis Street. So, there are a lot of times, there's a lot of traffic, they park on the street. And what ends up happening, delivery's going to their house. You've got UPS blocking my driveway all the time, I've gotta go to Whipple Street again tomorrow for another complaint, 'cause they did it again tonight. FedEx, Amazon, and they're delivering across at thirty-eight Gillis Street. They're not delivering at my house. So, when you have an added daycare, and I respect what they're trying to do, but this neighborhood is not zoned for business. We already have Mateo's Market on the corner, we have thirty-eight Gillis Street, which is Reyes Construction LLC, I've got an invoice from him, because he did work for me out in Hollis. And then you wanna have a childcare center around the corner. It's, there's too many businesses, and it's, it's an area that's not supposed to be zoned for business, it's residential. Any questions?
Just to clarify, I, I think you, you mentioned your, your, your neighbor at twenty-three.
I'm, I'm twenty-five, to the left of me is twenty-three, but across the street is thirty-four and thirty-six. Our street is numbered strange.
So, so you mentioned, did you mention it was your direct neighbor next to you at twenty-three?
At twenty-three.
Three and a half?
The whole front of the house you can't park in front of. They put wood in front of the curbing, drive over the curbing, over the sidewalk, and park facing the house.
So, did you mention that they move their cars out to let other cars out?
In the morning, yes.
So, so in essence, they may be there, they may be creating an issue that's unrelated to what's going across the street.
And I've seen times that there's been vehicles from thirty-eight that have blocked my driveway, that somebody's coming to do something, to repair something in my house, and can't get in my driveway because it's blocked.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? No, I said, is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition that wants to speak? Welcome, and if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Dean Lyons, one Arlington Ave. I live directly across from the daycare, and before, our neighbors have counted, we've counted nineteen kids there. I sent, I gave you my rebuttal letter. I know that the daycare person is saying she lives at thirty-four Gillis, she does not live there. I've not seen her there. And the requirement says. She does not live there. I've not seen her there. And the requirement says that you have to have only one non-resident working. She will only have one assistant according to her application. All throughout the daycare, it was constant. They were always parking on the wrong side. They were blocking my drive. They were, they were blocking other driveways. There's less than fifty feet from, to the corner. I live here. Here is Gillis Street. There's less than fifty feet here. There's less than fifty feet here. My garage is here. People from also twenty-three Gillis will park several cars there where there's really not enough room. So I get blocked there. I get blocked on the corner. Another neighbor has sent in the picture of how, where all the, the daycare people were parked. We would have, my son would come and visit me and he would be standing there. There's a car. There's another car. There's another car. And sometimes they'll go around the corner. In the wintertime, our street is so narrow, you can't get a plow truck there. Gillis Street, you've already got a bunch of people that are already parking the wrong way or they're just parked there. I get that you need childcare. I've got grandkids. I've got kids. The tenants of thirty-four, thirty-six, they have no yard whatsoever. If you look at the pictures, then they put that really tall fence that was way past the allowed six-foot fence. It's about eight feet taller than that. I just can't see it. I've also put in the, what state says, and I believe that they were, code enforcement said that they have been approved for three children at thirty-six Williams. Well, if you take that, her two, and the other two, okay, you've already gone past three. You can have your own kids, though, I understand. But that doesn't equal twelve. And when I used to see them walking, they would take them and just kind of hold them and walk down the street. Two parents, if you've got that many kids and one of them runs away, how are you going to catch them? You can't do it. So it isn't just me as a neighbor. It's neighbor across the street, neighbor several doors down. We've all talked about it. We would, we just shake our heads. If there are any questions?
Prior to this current owner buying that home, that was an existing two-family or three-family?
It was a three-family.
So it's been a three-family for a long time?
Yes.
And the parking arrangements on the property, I'm assuming was, was the same. There was no, the parking was what it is today?
No.
No?
You had parking on Arlington Ave. You had one facing Gillis to the left of the building and you had one over to the right of the building. Now that is basically all pavement. These from over here on the right side, I believe, are for the thirty-eight tenants and not the thirty-four, thirty-six. This one has been expanded on the left side. And now you've got an additional pavement. So you've got, it's nothing but pavement. There's absolutely no yard except for where they put the trash cans at the front.
Thank you.
Mr. Neely?
We heard some testimony from one of the parents earlier that they've had an active discussion, ask folks not to park in Arlington anymore. Have you seen any improvement in the last couple of weeks or is it still a continuing problem?
The childcare is not there right now because they were closed down by the fire marshal and code enforcement because it was illegal. And they were again, they were, there were too many kids for that amount. And there's no egress windows there either. So you, I don't know if that relates to the fire code, the fire safety code. And if it was turned into another dwelling unit, if you look at, I think, the IRC, you've got to be able to have an egress window for, if you have a bedroom. And I don't know where they would park. Because everything's full.
Yes. Oh, set. I think we're set. Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition in the audience? Is there anybody online with questions, concerns, or opposition to this thirty-four-dash-thirty-six Gillis Street application? Before we move to the rebuttal part of things, we, some of you, I think, had, we had gotten written, several written correspondence and email correspondences regarding the case. And I don't know if we have, I think, Karina, you sent maybe a one or two, we got something in the email in the last day or so, right? But I don't know if we have any of those copies directly.
I don't have more copies. I have the originals here. They were just for the...
And those were the support?
Those are the support.
Additional support ones. So we had those. All right. And then in the packet, we also had, and some of this could be, I might not have kept track of who spoke and who didn't. We had from, it looks like Roger Seroy, basically writing regarding this during summer months and in December, a child daycare facility was in operation. This was being operated without licensing permits. It would still be in operation if the neighbors hadn't reported the facility. Attached to my concerns and observations. Thank you for your time and consideration. And this is, then, there's fairly lengthy things. I won't read everything here, but we'll have that in the record. Actually, I think that's, you testified. I'm sorry. Yeah. Or at least Catherine Seroy testified, right, earlier. But we have the written testimony, which will be part of the record. We also have correspondence from, it looks like Jacques Dubey. The concerns, in addition to my wife's concerns below, which there's a separate correspondence. We live in Arlington and also have, also grew up on this street and over the decades, the neighborhood has changed. The largest change I have seen is the number of tenant cars parked in the streets. Having a daycare facility in the neighborhood would only exacerbate the problem. I've read the variance and believe the accommodations being requested are unreasonable. They only have one-third of the land required and there are around a dozen tenant cars and RVs that park at this property. There is probably a good reason why a childcare facility is not allowed in a multifamily home. Child safety. This is not a safe place for a childcare facility. When the daycare was operating in the summer, cars were also driving the wrong way down Arlington Ave, which is a one-way street, again, creating a safety problem. And then Tanya Dewey also has a correspondence with this. Traveling and unable to attend, I know this location was being used as a daycare facility over the summer, which created a surge in traffic on both Gillis Street and the small one-way Arlington Avenue. I have two primary concerns. If the variance are granted, allowing a daycare to be run, increased traffic on small congested Arlington Avenue creates a safety concern for neighborhood children. And a lack of parking for drop-off and pickup times creates a safety hazard, blocking visibility, egress on Arlington Ave. Is there no parking spaces available at thirty-four, thirty-six Gillis Street that are already being utilized by existing tenants? There's some further details under both those main points. But again, this, this will be in the written record for the case. And then, and then, yeah, that's further. I think that was it. Yeah. So. So we'll have five minutes for you as the applicant to come back up. And the only thing you can really speak to are any of the concerns or issues raised in the opposition testimony. And then for the few of you that spoke in opposition, only one of you can come back up, if anybody wants to come back up for rebuttal. And if you want to confer beforehand, you can do that. But meanwhile, we'll have the applicant come back up and speak. Actually, you don't have to, but you're more than welcome to. That's the usual process. So you can come back for up to five minutes and speak to the things that were raised. So if you want to do that, please.
Okay. So as we were...
I'm sorry. Could you just state your name and address for the record for?
Sorry. Vanessa Velas Gomez, thirty-eight Gillis Street. So as we mentioned early, we're trying to fix like the parking problem. As we said, we already had a meeting with parents. The amount of kids has decreased. Kyle said that the amount of, and Fire Marshal said that the amount of kids was twelve kids. Tasha from the license and, licensing in Concord also went to the house, did the measurements once again and agreed with twelve kids. She already has the list. So, I mean, as we said, two kids are my kids. I'm next door, so I don't need a car for, to drop off. The other two kids come with Carla in the morning. So that's four kids less. So we're up to four parents. I mean, eight parents. Two parking spaces in Arlington. I know she said like the concrete spot, we did like an extra parking space. There was like a land there. We put concrete on it. So, so, so like it's an extra parking spot. So we're trying to find solutions for this. They also mentioned about twenty-three Gillis Street. And the apartments across from twenty-three Gillis Street has no parking spaces there. Like it's a complete road that like has no other parking spaces other than the one from one Arlington Street. But other than that, like you can park there without blocking any drivers or anything. I mean, as I say, like we're trying to find solutions. Tasha is working with us. Like we know she's showing up at any time. We're trying to not put any kids in danger. As we say, as you read in the letters, we also read the letters. They were really specific on how we work, how is the daycare working. So usually traffic is just from seven-thirty to like eight-thirty, which is drop time. It's also traffic because of the schools on there. But other than that, pickup is from four-thirty to five-thirty, as one of parents mentioned. We usually don't go at the same time as one or two more parents. Like, it's not like all of us are there at the same time. So, yeah. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Neely?
It sounds like from what you just said, that Ms. Torres doesn't, does not live in the building, right?
Oh, we already signed a lease. So right now, she hasn't moved in because Tasha and Fire Marshal said that they can't go ahead to approve this project until soon it approves it. So we already signed a lease that she's moving in because, yes, she needs to be in the building to, this to go through. But we just, she hasn't moved in just because, so we don't have it approved. Why is the point of her moving in when we don't have it approved? Once, if, if your decision to have it approved, then she will move in.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I get, well, was there still a little bit of time left?
She had two minutes.
I guess, come on up.
My name is Santos Reyes, thirty-eight Gillis Street. I want to add about what were mentioned about the other parking spot that I added, I did add. Mark and team, when they came to get the space for the deck, I showed to them and they were, I told them that it was just an extra space that I make myself, that I know that I did. So I recognize that. And they would say it was okay because I showed them how to build it. So that was the only, I don't know if you have any questions for me?
No. All right, thank you.
All right.
All right. So I think one of you is coming up for the opposition rebuttal.
Yes, I wanted to say about the traffic.
Oh, sorry. Name and address.
I'm sorry. Jean Lyons, one Arlington Ave. I did want to say about the traffic. It's not just this time and that time. It was all day long. I would get up about seven and I'd see the traffic. And then they would, the last parent would leave about five-thirty, quarter-six. And then, then Ms. Torres and her assistant would leave by six. So it wasn't just this little bit and this little bit. And then you would also have, sometimes you would just have a lineup of the cars that wanted to drop them off and whatever. You figured that at that point in time, there were at least nineteen kids. So nineteen times two. And then I understand from some of the neighbors, there were some kids from Dr. Crisp that would come over. That's what I was told. I can't verify that. And I also wonder if Ms. Torres is going to be moving there. The three-family is already full. Where is she going to be moving to when the seller apartment is not a legal apartment, since there's no egress windows? It's not set up as an apartment.
Any questions from the board? All right, thank you. All right, that closes out the public hearing. We'll open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel, your thoughts?
Yeah, this is very difficult. I certainly agree and understand that affordable daycare is, is very difficult to find. And it does sound as if there is, Ms. Torres is providing, you know, useful and wanted daycare, but I'm having trouble getting past all of the points of law that we're supposed to consider for, for granting the variances. You know, for example, is there a special condition of the property? And we've had lots of testimony about impact on the neighbors with difficulty parking and conflicting testimony about how, how kids are dropped off and picked up. And I, I honestly don't know whom to believe. So I'm struggling with this and I'd be interested to hear other people's opinions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm honestly also having some difficulty with this application. So I'll start off with the fact that I was, you know, impressed, I guess, about the enthusiasm about Ms. Torres and the owners of the property, what they want to do. Certainly, I can appreciate that and I think it's commendable that what they're doing. But again, we're here to look at, you know, the land use. So I, I'm struggling because, you know, this is, this is a three-family. I can't remember last time we approved or, you know, we looked at a daycare in a three-family. On, you know, again, it's such a compact area. I am not comfortable with approving this without knowing that the, the exterior, whatever's required for exterior for the children can be contained on that lot. Because again, like Mr. Neely stated, we don't know what's going to happen. And I am sure that the applicant and the owner is sincere, but, you know, life changes sometimes. And sometimes we have opportunities and there we go, right? So, but it's going to be an existing condition. So I, I think, I believe, from the testimony and from what I observed, that there's both, there's two things going on. I think there's, there's a lot of going on in this property. But I also believe that, that some of these issues are also exacerbated by other property owners on the street. And again, And again, street parking, a street park, anybody can legally park on the street whatever they like as long as it's being done in a legal manner. But again, I'm just struggling with the application right now, so.
Mr. Neely?
I think from the testimony, what Ms. Torres is doing is fantastic. Having, having read the information that these folks all provided, there's some magnificent stuff going on there. If, if Ms. Torres had a storefront, I think I'd be a customer. I mean, she really is doing some fantastic things. Talking to Mr. Reyes, I love his vision of the neighborhood, bringing the family together. I'm having a hard time, there was a couple of things I had a hard time with. The first one being the play area, the fact that it's on the 38 Gillis rather than 34, 36 without any type of codification. Like we're, we're just assuming nothing will change for the next bunch of years. And as we're talking about life changes, I can't get around that. They've got to have someplace to go. There's not enough room on 34, 36 for the kids to get out there. We all, we all know kids need areas to play. As far as the traffic goes, I do think that, that, that these folks have probably well addressed it with, with their customers and said, hey, you know, we can't be blocking the customers. We need to be good stewards of the neighborhood. I do believe, I think there was, there was a testimony that it's really 23 Gillis that kind of floods the street with, with cars. I did go by on Saturday. There was, you know, there was tons of room on Saturday. But, but I'm sure it's different on a weekday morning. You know, I was kind of taking a look at all the, the evidence from the neighbors. Looks like there's at least three properties in the near area that spoke up that are, that are very much against it. I'm having, I'm having a hard time getting to a place where I would be in favor of this.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also struggling. All of the, the points that my colleagues have brought up. And again, I commend the great work that they're doing with the daycare, but I just don't feel comfortable supporting this application.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think like all of you, I'm sharing the struggles. I think it's, I think it's really hard in cases like this where there is a really good intention and some really good work being done. And, and we are unfortunately so much forced into looking at things from a very narrow perspective to do with the land use. The special conditions of the property has already been mentioned. And that these, these decisions also run with the land. And I, you know, I was, I was ready to try to understand that whole thing also about, you know, the use of number 38. It's great from a, just a trying to do it type of thing. But unfortunately, because we have to look at it as it's for this property, it makes it very difficult. Yeah, and, and actually, Mr. Boucher, my recollection is we, I think we had one two-family proposal for a daycare in the North End that, I can't recall what, what way we decided on that. It was quite a while ago. But I think that's like the most kind of significant one that I can recall having in front of us anytime, at least in any recent past or even not so recent past. But I think that, I think it's, I mean, the, the ordinance is, you know, has, essentially expresses the current concerns about, about doing multifamily with in-home daycare. I think it's probably rooted somewhat in the fact that by its very nature, there is much more going on with multiple tenants that, and I don't know, but it seems like it might be, you know, ultimately a little bit with some thought about how you guarantee kind of the protection and safety of children. But even, even if that's not the specific reason, it's still a lot of intensity of usage, so. And I know very much so also from, from some of the other nonprofit work I do that the childcare issue is just such an extreme thing in this city, in this area, and in general. So I really don't like kind of feeling like I'm on the side of not being able to support something that would add additional childcare to, you know, to the community. But this, I think, is, is, I don't think there's sufficient criteria being met. And I guess the one other thing though I wanted to say is, I do think that perhaps some of the testimony and just some of like what was going on before is it does sound like perhaps there was a more intensive use than what is actually going to, would be allowed and is being proposed. And I expect that that might simply be out of not like being fully aware of what, you know, would have been, been allowed under kind of the normal operation. So, so I think there, it sounds like there might have been a more extreme situation going on when this was running previously that would not be replicated because there would be the, the, kind of the bounds set up here. But all that being said, I guess I can't bring, I can't see that we really are able to meet the criteria to do the approval, so.
And I also think that, again, in my mind, I agree completely with what you just said. And yeah, in my mind, the only way I could come close to this would be like, like a plan. Because I think that the use may have been more intensive, I believe it was. I, I think that there was a lot more going on there, after-school type things where we're adding people, and then those are the people coming to get children, however they do that. But with that being said, you know, if there was, you know, the only way I could see is if there was a plan. And then, but then I don't want to, you, I wouldn't want to have, you know, like 10 stipulations to, to, to really narrow focus this because, because again, this goes with the land. So, so this owner could sell this property and the next person could come in. And if we don't have, you know, they can have the best intentions, but if, if we didn't have anything, you know, at that point laid out, then there could be an issue, you know, for the neighborhood. So, but I think at this point, I just can't see having multiple stipulations to try to shoot long this end.
Any other comments from the board? I think, seems like we probably have a fairly, fairly clear sentiment of not approving this. But we'll, if somebody wants to pursue a motion to that effect. I'm sorry, we can't take any more testimony once we close the public hearing.
I guess I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lionel. And I don't know if, we also, since we have the variance, area variance and use variance and special exception, I don't know, even sometimes, I know we often look to Mr. Fock for guidance on the best way to approach the sequence of things.
I would do the first request, the use variance first. You can probably add that in with the variant, the dimensional variance, the second one. Do those together, and the special exception separate.
Okay. I hate this. I really do. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Santos Gomez Reyes. The applicant is Carla Torres, address 34, 36 Gillis Street. Sheet 27, Lot 9, requesting the following variances. Use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36, subsection B, to allow an in-home childcare facility in a three-family building where the ordinance allows only them in a single-family detached dwelling. And variance from Land Use Code Section 190-36, subsection B.3, to allow a childcare facility on a lot that does not meet the minimum land area. 18,669 square feet required, 6,838 square feet existing. The board, although the board believes that the variance is needed by the applicant to use the applicant's proposed use of the property, that there are no special conditions of the property that would really be in favor of, of the variance. There is, there is no other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, which is trying to reduce the impact on, on the children and on neighbors of childcare facility. The board believes, we don't have testimony specifically about property values of surrounding parcels. But it does seem clear that the increased intensity would, could, could affect the values of surrounding parcels. Public interest of, of operating a daycare facility is certainly in the public interest. However, the impact on the neighbors is not necessarily in the public interest. Substantial justice would be served, but because not all of the points of law are, are met, we believe my motion is to deny the area and use variances.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Neely. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Ms. Boras?
Ms. Boras votes in favor to deny. Motion to deny, sorry.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial. All right, that passes unanimously, and we have the special exception.
Okay, I'll do that. Again, owner Santos Gomez Reyes, applicant Carla Torres, address 34, 36 Gillis Street, sheet 27, Lot 9, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, table 15-1, item 292, to allow an in-home childcare, daycare center, child, to allow in-home child daycare for 12 children, up to 12 children. This is in the RB zone, word seven. The board finds this is listed in the table of uses, but we also find that it will create undue traffic congestion and possibly impair pedestrian safety. We have no testimony on overloading public water, drainage, or sewer or other municipal systems. Special regulations are fulfilled. But the board also believes that this will impair integrity and be out of character with the neighborhood or, and be detrimental to the health, well, health morals or welfare of residents. We have significant testimony from residents saying how the unlicensed daycare at this location has already impacted them. And we, we don't see any clear evidence that, that will change. So I make a motion to deny the special exception.
Could I ask you to clarify though? Because at least I don't think that the special conditions are met when you consider, you know, the requirement of a single family as, and the-
Well, we have, we have the signed document. The applicant has, has testified that they meet the special conditions. I suppose you're right that, that we certainly have lots of other testimony that some of them are not met, such as onsite parking for the principal residential use. Yes.
I think, I mean, I think the area variance was needed to like take care of the single family. And since that's not, you know, that, that wasn't enacted.
Okay, so I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to modify the motion and say special regulations are not fulfilled.
All right.
Is that, will that do? Okay.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Neely? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? And this is a motion to deny.
Motion to deny, yes.
Seeing none, Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Ms. Boras?
Ms. Boras votes in favor to the motion to deny.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial. That passes unanimously, so. So obviously you've heard, we, the board was not able to find approval for your application. And I think, you know, just at least, you know, I think you sense that it's not an easy decision for us because we know there's good work that you're trying to do. And it's needed service, but because of our, what we're restricted to and the way we have to consider these cases, I'm sorry that we're, we're not able to approve this, so. And, but there is a window of 30 days, so you, you are welcome to file a rehearing request. If you feel that we have made the decisions in error, please feel free to contact Mr. Fock if you want to pursue that at all. Or certainly if you have any questions about any of the process, so. Thank you. We can't really take any comments.
Oh, I have a question, I have a question. I have a question, like, well, just a question, like to get in the next. The 38, 34, 36, the dude has the backyard, I added like the whole team, but I'm getting stuff.
Oh, sorry, so, sorry, we can't take, yeah, but thank you.
It's because they couldn't appeal by anybody.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that could possibly be part of, if you have reason to believe that, that wasn't properly considered, you could consider that in a, in a rehearing request, for example. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do anything, but that is, I think, if you feel that something has not been properly considered, you have that option.
All right, thank you everybody for, for coming. That, that closes our regular applications. And those of you that were here for the cases specifically, you're welcome to stick around. We have a couple of little other minor items of business to take care of. But you're also more than welcome to exit if you prefer. Give everybody a moment here as well. Sorry, we, we do have to finish up the meeting, so. The, the next order of business is we don't have any motions for rehearing. We do not have an upcoming agenda to determine regional impact since the next meeting is three weeks out. And that agenda won't be finalized for another week or so. And then we have, we do have minutes to approve. They were from the January 9th, 2024 meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, modifications, feedback?
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 9th meeting.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Lionel, second. Any discussion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Ms. Boras?
Ms. Boras votes in favor.
And Mr. Shaw votes in favor. So that passes unanimously. And do we have any other business for tonight?
The only thing is the election of officers, but we'll have to wait till we have a full contingent of folks here for that. Other than that, we don't have anything. The agenda, we'll email out to you probably by the end of the week or maybe on Monday, and we have it ready.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Boras, do you have anything else to add, or are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, I'll move to adjourn, and we are adjourned at 8:19, thank you.